All meetings ordered, roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
And Sholdes.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to your flag, on the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proposed additions or deletions to the agenda, council?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Sholdes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
A motion passes. Consent items, I'll call on Vrenae Larson, our city clerk. Give you some time.
I'm ready. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, tonight for your approval, I have the city council minutes of May 19th of 2025. The planning commission meeting minutes of May 21st, 2025 is a draft. The Wilmer Municipal Utilities Special Meeting Minutes of May 19th, 2025. The Wilmer Municipal Utilities Draft Minutes from May 27th, 25. Project number 2501-A, 20th Street Southeast Improvements Change Order Number One. Consideration of a municipal-owned property on-sale liquor license holder permit for Spurs Corporation. City Park Special Event by on-sale liquor license holder permit Spurs Corporation. And the accounts payable report from 5/15/25 to 5/28/25. And for your information, I have the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Financial Report from March of 2025.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
I vote yes, too.
It's okay. Somehow my list didn't give me Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
He's not here, I don't know why.
Is that the bird?
It's on there. Yeah.
Motion passes anyway. Alright, we'll go on to the next item is the open forum. And if you're going to speak, you have three minutes. And give your name and address when you approach the podium. First one is Andres Albertson.
Good evening. I am Andres Albertson, 1405 19th Avenue Southeast, Apartment 103 here in Wilmer. So I am here once again to speak in support of Pride and to share how it has grown in Wilmer over the past year. The proclamation signed by the Governor of Minnesota declares June as Pride Month, a time to celebrate LGBTQ+ identity, community, and resilience, and to continue the struggle for justice and equality. And that's exactly, exactly what we will be doing here in Wilmer this weekend. Last year, I told you we were planning a small Pride event at Intuition Brewing. We simply wanted to show people, especially those struggling to accept who they are, that it is okay to be LGBTQ+. That in Wilmer, the welcoming resolution passed in 2018 was more than worth. That it was a promise that all residents, regardless of age, gender, sexual orientation, religion, race, or background, are indeed welcome and free to live fully as themselves. We would have been happy with 20 people on June 28th last year, some of you were there. Instead, more than 120 came. Intuition had never been so full. Allies showed up, but what touched me most were all the LGBTQ+ folks who came out, many shy, some exuberant, all finally able to be themselves, holding hands, wearing colors, wearing makeup, and feeling safe. That night led to monthly Rainbow Nights at Intuition and regular public meetings to plan something even bigger for this year. Most of those now involved in planning this year's Pride weren't even at the first event, somewhere weren't even living in Wilmer yet. People like Jake, who will be speaking after me, moved here looking for a safer place for themselves and their families. Besides planning this weekend's event, which Sarah will tell you more about, I want to highlight two things that have happened since last June. One is that we wanted to have a youth group and approached the Dream Academy. They didn't have such a group yet, but now they have their own LGBTQ+ group thriving independently. And then we also realized that some people didn't feel comfortable gathering at a venue that serves alcohol, so we started a monthly event, Queer Connections Meetup, at the community center, which has been a huge success. Let me finish.
Andres, your time is up.
Let me say that I am proud, and yes, I am a pastor saying that. There is a pride that hurts when we use it to shame or exclude others, but there is also a pride that heals when we celebrate the many ways we have been created, the many stories we carry, and the dignity we all share. And that's the pride we will be celebrating this weekend. So join us, happy Pride.
Alright, next speaker Jake Hartgrove.
Hello, I'm Jake Hartgrove. I live at 515 Lakeland Drive Southeast, Apartment 107 here in Wilmer. So I'm definitely grateful to be able to stand here before you. I'd like to start with a big thank you for the community and the council members here today. We at Wilmer Pride are very happy to stand before you and convey our appreciation of acceptance. I love Wilmer, and I'm proud to live here in this lovely town. The friends and community I have found have made my life a little brighter. With this month being Pride, we are glad to share our happiness with everyone. Young and old, we long for a place that is safe and loving, a place to express ourselves with people who share our interests. This city has been that for me and my family. From kind doctors to smiling faces at the stores around town. The general willingness to help others is abundant. Wilmer is a great melting pot of joy and culture where helping hand isn't required, but is consistently given from so many residents here. So, thank you, Wilmer, for being my home. Thank you to the council members for allowing us to hold our events that bring joy and community to Wilmer and the surrounding areas. And to all here today and any viewers far and wide, Wilmer Pride is very proud of our city. We look forward to giving back to the community with love and kindness. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Sarah Moulton.
Hello. My name is Sarah Moulton. I live at 424 Litchfield Avenue, Apartment 1, here in Wilmer, Minnesota. So, all that said, thank you to my other Wilmer Pride members. My job is to invite you, your friends, and your families to our Wilmer Pride events. We have organizers and volunteers who've been working very hard to put together events that we feel can reach and support people all across our community. So I'm just gonna give you a little overview of some of those events, and hopefully you can join us. So Friday is when things start. Our monthly Queer Connections Meetup at the Wilmer Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 is an event where people will be gathering to do Pride art. As Andrea said, we're particularly proud of this event. We just started it in February, so it's only been maybe four months, but we've watched it grow every single month. And one of the cool things is that people who have attended have said, like, we were just waiting for something like this in Wilmer, and people look forward to it every month. We even have people who come from different places nearby to join us at this Queer Connections event. And so this will continue long after Pride, year-round. So that's happening on Friday, and then also, for a more extroverted start to the weekend, we have our kickoff event, which is at Intuition Brewing, which is where it all began last year. And so there will be from 3:00 to 9:30, there's gonna be rainbow flights, prizes, trivia, karaoke, all kinds of fun stuff for people to enjoy. Then on Saturday, we have three events. Saturday is very full, so we have our Pride in the Park. We're very excited to do our first Pride in the Park this year at Rice Park. We're gonna have a lot of things there, including a full vendor and exhibitor fair, which we maxed out. So lots of people selling things that they have created, and different organizations and businesses having booths. And then we will also have crafts, face painting, storytime, food trucks, and a DJ. Then, we're also very excited about our Wilmer Pride Worship Service, which is happening at Bethel downtown at 6:00 PM. And this is something that faith leaders from various churches in Wilmer have come together to plan, a service that celebrates inclusivity and acceptance. There's gonna be a pickup choir during the service and fellowship to follow, and we already have a lot of great interest in that as well. And then finally, to cap off the weekend, our first annual Wilmer Pride Drag Show at Spurs downtown at 8:00 PM. This is an event featuring performers from Fargo, the cities, and right here in Wilmer. We've already sold over half of our available tickets for this, and we're hoping that we can sell out. So with all of these different options, we hope that you'll join us at some point this weekend to help us celebrate with a diverse, welcoming, and inclusive community we have here in Wilmer. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Bruce Schuman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the first time I've ever been here, so this is kind of a new experience for me. My wife and I and our family have lived out on St. John's Lake for 43 years, I think. And I just wanted to express appreciation for our mayor and his leadership over lots of years. I don't have the exact number, but I'm just very grateful. And our cities, you know, we're from St. John's, out on St. John's Lake, but what happens in Wilmer, and that's, that's what we connect with our family, wherever they are, that's kind of the center of how everybody knows us. So what goes on here is really important. And for some of the challenges that our council has had over the years, it's just really a comfort and an encouragement to me to have the stability and the respect and interaction of the council that our mayor has, I think, engendered, and I'm just here to express my appreciation to him in that regard.
Thank you. We have one more speaker, Ellery Shipman.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Ellery Shipman, and I live at 1003 6th Street Southwest, Wilmer, Minnesota. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about a vision I believe lines perfectly with our city's growths, values, and long-term goals. For the past six years, I've dreamed of opening my own, my very own wedding venue and event center. That dream became personal three years ago when I was a bride myself, searching for a place to celebrate one of the most important days of my life. Around this area, options were very limited and still are, and my now-husband and I had to choose between outdated conference centers, overpriced venues, and rustic facilities that lacked basic amenities. Many spaces also didn't feel welcoming or reflective of our vibrant and diverse community we live in today. That experience sparked the idea for Henley Haven, a new wedding venue and event center right here in Wilmer. True to its name, Henley Haven is a space where people feel safe, seen, and celebrated. Not only will it accommodate weddings for at least 250 guests, it can also host community events such as fundraisers, school banquets, business conferences, cultural celebrations, and so much more. The venue fills a clear gap in the local market for a fresh and inclusive space. Built from the ground up, it will feature an open layout, both indoor and outdoor ceremony options, spacious and private bridal and groom suites, indoor and outdoor bars, a prep kitchen to support a variety of food service needs. The parcel I'm interested in is 95872-1050. I understand there's interest from Wilmer Municipal in using this parcel for a new building. However, I respectfully believe in this land and that it has potential to serve all residents and not just one department. Henley Haven would bring people together for life's biggest moments and generate long-lasting economic activity. It would support local vendors, create jobs, generate tax revenue, and attract out-of-state, or out-of, sorry, out-of-town guests who spend at local hotels, restaurants, and shops. It would also strengthen Wilmer's reputation as a vibrant place to live, work, and gather. In closing, this is more than just a business idea. It's a response to a real and unmet need in our area. With a clear market gap, strong leadership, and a thoughtful vision, Henley Haven is positioned for long-term success. I'm not just creating a business, I'm creating a space for the community to gather, connect, and belong. Thank you for considering this person, this proposal. I'd be honored to work with the city of Wilmer to bring Henley Haven to life. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only speakers we have for the open forum. We'll go to regular business and project number 2504B Lakeland Drive Trail Funding, and a call on Jared Bogie, our engineer.
Good evening, mayor, council. And closing your packets this evening is some background information about the Lakeland Drive Trail Project. When we were here at the improvement hearing for the 2025 improvements, it was council direction to pursue funding for the Lakeland Drive path improvements. And the item before you this evening is exactly that. The city has successfully obtained two grants for the improvement. One is through the Active Transportation Program in the amount of $204,380. The second grant is through the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is a federally-funded program, in the amount of $895,620. The only item associated with these two funding sources is that the Active Transportation Program is scheduled for funding in 2026. The Transportation Alternatives are the larger of the two grants. Funds become available in 2028. So what's before you this evening is a recommendation that the Community Investment Fund temporarily finance the Transportation Alternative Grant until those monies are received by the city in 2028. Resolution has been enclosed for your consideration this evening. And with all of the grant programs, there will be additional agreements and other items that come before you. But in order to get back to the funding agencies and determine, let them know whether or not the city will accept these grants, we've identified, staff has identified, the Community Investment Fund as a, as a means to cover that gap until those federal funds are distributed to the city. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Audrey.
I'm supportive of this, the Lakeland Drive plan to do that. Think it's a necessary improvement to get for biking and walking and all of those things. Confused with, in the documentation that we got, that this project has to be completed by the, by 2026, but we're talking about not receiving funding till 2028. Can you just help us to understand that gap?
Yeah, absolutely. So the Active Transportation Funds, or the approximate $204,000, that funding program requires construction to be completed in 2026. The Transportation Alternatives, which is the federal piece, that funding is, the project can be constructed in advance of 2028, but the funds won't be released until 2028. So that's where staff identified the Community Investment Fund as the gap until those federal funds are received in '28.
So if we receive those, because I know that there's been a lot of things that have been pulled back, is there a guarantee that if we're approved for this, that we will get the funds in 2028?
Yeah, so as part of the construction, constructing it in 2026, there will be an advanced construction agreement through MINDOD and FHWA that will allocate those funds. The project, the project is actually already sitting on the state transportation improvement plan, but they're asking for city authorization, if you will, to move that to the next step.
Okay.
Yep.
Tom.
That wasn't quite clear enough for me. So if the federal funds are not available...
Pull your mic down.
Thank you. If the federal funds are, I guess clawed back or anything else, is there anything protecting the city from not being reimbursed from those funds? It sounds like the state is on board, it's the federal funds that are not dispersed until 2028.
Federal funds are not dispersed until 2028. So if you're alluding to this uncertainty right now at the federal level, the, all I can say is that the project has been awarded the funding. And whether or not, I guess I can't definitively tell you with 100% certainty that something at the federal level is not gonna happen to claw the funds back. But so far, there's been delays on other projects, but not removal of awarded funding through a federally authorized grant program.
Alright. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city to temporarily finance the Transportation Alternatives Program grant award for project number 2504B through the Community Investment Fund until 2028, when the grant monies are available to reimburse the Community Investment Fund.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jared.
Thanks, council.
Last item is something that I requested staff to develop, and it was turned over to our city attorney, Robert Scott, and that's the rules of decorum. And the purpose of them is to ensure respectful public discourse for all parties in a safe environment. And I'm gonna turn it over to Robert Scott to address any of your questions and to run through it.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. You do have draft rules of decorum in your packet, as well as associated revisions that would be made to the open forum sign-in sheet, where the council to adopt these rules. I won't read them verbatim, but the reason to have rules of decorum, which is something I don't understand the city council in Wilmer has ever formally had in place, is really to provide a tool for the city council to use to ensure that it can keep its meetings orderly, so that it's able to conduct official business as efficiently and as orderly as possible. Obviously, there's at times a tension between the council keeping order and conducting its business efficiently, and also facilitating public input during city council meetings. They're not always in tension, but they can be in certain circumstances, and that's true, I think, at every level of government. So having a policy in place like this is really intended to be a tool for the city council, for the presiding officer in particular, to have some just ground rules that everyone participating in a meeting has agreed to. That's true not just for members of the public who might be attending, it's true certainly of city staff, the attorney, and city councilors themselves. These would be applicable to everyone participating in a public meeting. In drafting these, the intent was not to create something that's overly procedural. The intent was really just to state some basic principles, some basic concepts that the city council will hold itself to and will hold everybody participating in this meeting to. And the focus is really on things such as basic steps to avoid interruptions of council proceedings, and avoiding disruptions to city council proceedings. So for example, in the rules that are before you, there's a principle that every member of the city council agrees to cooperate with the presiding officer in his attempts or her attempts to preserve order and decorum during the meetings. There's basic requirements that everybody, for example, disable their devices that are capable of providing an interruption or disruption to the meeting. There's principles that essentially require all comments made by anybody during the meeting to refrain from making offensive, insulting, threatening, profane, obscene language, and to just keep everything respectful. And having said that, I should point out also that there is a provision in here that respects everybody's First Amendment rights. In no circumstances will the content of anybody's message or viewpoint itself be a cause to be found in violation of these rules of decorum. However, whatever the viewpoint is, should be communicated in a respectful manner, and these rules reflect that. There's also just some very basic principles that apply, I think, to essentially every governmental meeting, which is that no person shall speak during the meeting until the presiding officer has recognized them. And in the case of public comment, there is also a provision in paragraph nine that would get to the actual kind of mechanics of how that's to work during council meetings, which specifies that the public shall address the council from the podium, which is in the center of the room, and that under no circumstances may anyone addressing the council approach the council table beyond the edge of the podium. That's something that law enforcement had kind of flagged for us for consideration as we were working on these. I think that's a concern anytime an individual does approach the council table. So this would give the council, again, intended to be a tool that it can use to return to order if there ever are occasions where any of these principles are violated. So with that said, the last page of the rules of decorum, getting to the point that this is really a tool for the council and for the presiding officer to use, outline kind of a sequence of, I guess, escalating measures that the presiding officer is authorized to take, ranging obviously from a simple warning or observation that a person is acting out of order, out of compliance with these rules of decorum, and escalating to if the situation is not resolved and the violation is not remedied, an actual order that the person violating the rules remove themselves from the meeting room, up to and including enforcement by law enforcement if a person disobeys that order. The last page of your packet here does indicate that some of these rules would be stated right on the signup sheet for anyone who wishes to address the council during the open forum specifically. They would be agreeing that by choosing to participate in that opportunity, that they would be held to and would be complying with the rules of decorum that I've just summarized. That's something that if the council were to adopt these rules or something like them, I think would just be implemented. I don't think that requires a separate action by the council. So the last point I would make is, in drafting these, I obviously was using my experience... I obviously was using my experience attending Wilmer council meetings for many years now. It should not be seen as something that is like an ongoing problem with the council. In fact, quite the contrary, I think this is a great time for the council to consider adopting something like this because it's very difficult to do so if the council has ongoing problems keeping order at its meetings. But with that said, this is a tool for the council. If the council feels that any of the rules here don't strike the right balance or that they didn't cover something that the council thinks should be covered, the council certainly has the opportunity to make note of that and we will adjust these accordingly and bring them back. Or if the council just doesn't want to have these in place, that's obviously the council's choice too. But that's the summary of what's before you. I'd certainly be happy to try and answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, for running through that and explaining it. And I, I think of the years that have gone by, we've had understandings such as if somebody has something to give to the council, that they give it to staff and the staff gives it to the council rather than them coming up to the table. I mean, it's just things like that that we need to have it in writing so that we understand what are the rules, what are the safeguards, what are the right way of doing things. So I appreciate your spending time. Are there any questions? If not, I'm going to call for a motion to approve the rules of decorum for the city of Wilmer. So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Audrey.
Thank you, Mayor Reese. I just want to ask one question. Is this kind of a standard? I mean, is, would you find this in other cities? In this, or is it customized for Wilmer?
You, certainly many cities have adopted rules of order, rules of procedure, rules of decorum. There's a wide range. There are cities that have nothing in place to cities that have very detailed sets of procedure. My, so to answer your question, this is, I think, reflecting my judgment on what would be appropriate for this body. I would say among cities that have adopted policies like this, this is on the very basic and simple range of the spectrum, simply because I don't think the council has historically become overly procedural and really it has established pretty strong customs that help it through meetings. But reducing them to some very basic principles that everyone has access to, I think, could benefit this body.
Thank you.
Anybody else? There's no further discussion? I'll call, roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Agger Lee.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gilbertson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. It passes for your help. And thank you, Council, for recognizing the value of the rules of decorum. Next announcements. Are there any announcements? Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm grateful that we live in a community that gets to celebrate Pride this week. I want to say that I'm grateful for the folks that have brought this to us. Celebrating Pride is a newer thing for our community. What you said, this is the second year. And so I'm glad that we're all learning and growing together. It's an opportunity to affirm that everyone belongs in our community, that they belong here, that they deserve to feel safe, respected and valued. Just today, I was actually talking with some parents who were concerned about their LGBTQ plus child and they want to feel proud of their child. They want their child to feel proud of who they are. And I think that's what we all want for ourselves and for our neighbors and for our children. So Pastor Andres, Jake, Sarah, all of you that have worked so hard in planning this, thank you for working so hard to ensure that no one feels afraid to be themselves here in Wilmer. I'm proud to share this community with you and to share pride with you all this week.
Audrey.
I still go with this a little bit, but I, I was very proud of our community. We did this back in February 2018 when we did declaring the city as a welcoming city. And I think there's room for all of us. And I think that as an elected official, it's our responsibility to make sure that everyone feels welcome in this community. And if you haven't read it for a while, maybe you need to go back and read what we said when we were declaring the city of Wilmer as a welcoming city. And so with that, I hope your week goes well. I hope the month goes well. I hope that we can learn to respect each other for who we are and what we each bring to the table. And so, thank you.
Carl.
I'd just like to congratulate all the 2025 graduates in the area and specifically those from Wilmer. So just job well done, students, and good luck in your future.
Anybody else? We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.